This meeting will lend the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, on my nation and with God, the reasonable liberty of each and every citizen.
Statement of our good notice.
In accordance with the open public meetings act, chapter 231, half the notes of this meeting have been provided as follows. On January 10th, 2018, notes were sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Cliff of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing as allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine.
Rople.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Mrs. Shahada.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Here.
Mrs. Bellani.
Here.
Mrs. Welch.
Here.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Present.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam.
Here.
Mr. Tapleski.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes of the community hall regular meeting held on Tuesday, August 28.
So hold.
Second.
Rople.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yeah.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam.
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski.
Yes.
Attorney General's Report.
No.
Superintendent, I skipped it.
You skipped it. Okay, you threw me out.
Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Tapleski. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, community members. We're back to school. Two weeks in now, right back in the swing of things. I'd like you to see my full superintendent's report. There's a copy on the stage. It's a newsletter that's published on the day of the board meeting. It's available in print tonight. It'll be sent out electronically tomorrow via email on all our social media platforms. The superintendent's report contains news articles with interactive links, also some pictures that show more of a story about all the amazing things going on in our district. So far, we've had a successful opening to our school year. Our back-to-school nights are in full effect. I strongly encourage our parents and guardians to attend the back-to-school night events in your child's school. And if for some reason you are unable to attend, please make an appointment to meet your child's teachers so that you can develop a relationship with them. That connection is very, very important. As a superintendent, I'm required annually to report to the Board of Education on our district's state assessment results. And while I gave a formal presentation the other night, I want to do a brief overview tonight. So the brief overview is just on the trends that we saw in our assessments. And the PowerPoint presentation will be posted to our website by the end of the week if you'd like to look at it in more detail. It's also important to note that anytime we're talking about state assessments, we should all realize that they are not and should never be the sole factor in determining whether you believe your child is intelligent, whether you believe your school is good, or your school district is effective. It is merely one piece of a very, very large puzzle. Standardized tests are a snapshot in time. They do not measure the myriad of intelligences that we see in all of our interpersonal, interpersonal, musical, artistic, to name a few. We're looking at our math and language arts assessments, our PARC results this year. We reveal many areas of improvement. In grades 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, and 11, we showed increases in language arts scores. And in grades 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and students taking Algebra I showed increases in mathematics. Since the beginning of the PARC assessments four years ago, all grade levels have demonstrated growth, with many grade levels improving much faster than the state. For example, our grade 3 mathematics scores grew 300% faster than the state average. When we follow a particular cohort of students from grade to grade, it reveals increases in all grade levels with two exceptions, 6th grade and 9th grade, which is identified as one of those dip years. It's a data trend that we've seen throughout the state, those transition years of 6th grade and 9th grade. Our ESL students take an assessment called the Access Test. And that reveals that a majority of our students are at the developing level where they should be. Some of our students with severe learning disabilities are assessed using a dynamic learning map. Of those students, 24% of those are on target and 29% are approaching grade levels in language arts. In mathematics, 18% are on target and 24% are approachable. That's a very brief helicopter view of our test results. I would encourage you to visit our website to find out more information. And of course, if you have any questions, you can contact me. This Friday, September 28th, will be our first Tiger Spirit Day of the year. All of our students are invited to wear their favorite Linden gear or anything black and orange. We're asking our teachers and staff to also participate by wearing their launch shirts or also anything orange and black to show that our Tiger pride is truly citywide. And furthermore, we're asking everyone to find creative ways to display their Tiger spirit on social media with a hashtag #TigerspiritDay. So please make sure, get some pictures out there and see all the great things we're doing. Mr. President, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Now, Attorney General's Report. No, sir. No, not at this time. Okay. Curriculum instruction, Mrs. Fabiana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 34 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 6 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of specialized programs for classified students, the approval of payments for related services, determination of related services, the approval of one-to-one paraprofessionals and the establishment of special education programs. Item 8 approves home instruction services for students of high focus. 9 amends board action on past CNI reports. 10 approves curriculum revisions. 11 grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. 12 approves district field trips. 13, 14, and 34 approve training for district staff. 15 approves professional development activities. 16 approves ediscier courses for students. Items 17 and 19 grant permission to participate in the Linden Halloween Parade. 18 grants approval for visitors from the new Taipei City, Taiwan, to tour our schools. Item 20 grants permission for the Kane Conservatory Music Concert Choir to perform at McManus. 21 grants permission for students to participate in the KEM Expo at Liberty Science Center. 22 grants permission for a delayed start at Linden High School for PSAT testing. 23 grants approval for peer pals to participate in walking trips to School 1 for the purpose of mentoring students. 24 grants approval for the use of the dance room for CPR training. 25 and 26 grant permission for bright and beautiful therapy dogs to work at Schools 6 and McManus. 27 grants permission to apply for 21st Century Supplemental Funds. 28 grants approval to conduct Sunday training sessions. 29 designates the district as a model district for the NJEA Priority Schools Initiative. Items 30, 31, and 32 proclaim October as National Bullying Prevention Month and designate the Week of Respect and School Violence Awareness Week. 33 proclaims October as National Presribals Month. Mr. President, I move item...
Another one. 34.
34 was already mentioned, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. My bad.
Mr. President, I move curriculum instruction. Items 1 through 34, respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Rople.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam.
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski.
Yes.
Management Operations Report, Mrs. Bellani.
The Management Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number 1 accepts the following retirement with regret and I'm going to pass that to Dr. Robert Tozzi.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. Strange to have three retirements on the agenda in January and September. Two are for January, one is for November. Maria Luckins has been a very dedicated employee of the Board of Education since 1987, when she started as a part-time school aide. In September of 1997, she was appointed as a secretary at McManus Middle School. She's since worked at Soul Middle School and School 10 and will be retired January 1st. William Stolback, affectionately known as Billy, started his career as a custodian at Linden High School Academy Building in 1988. During the time he was here, he worked at McManus Middle School. He was also the reporting head custodian at Linden High School and is finishing his career at the Academy Building. And Miriam Mercedes Valdi has worked with the Board of Ed for 19 years as a teacher of mathematics both at Soul and McManus Middle School. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate these outstanding employees on their return and wish them a long, happy, and healthy life. Thank you.
I just wanted to extend, as a parent as well as a board member, my appreciation to Mrs. Mercedes Valdi because she had my daughter Francesca last year. And if anybody knows Francesca, math is not her strong point. But she made Francesca love math and absolutely adore her. So I appreciate it as a parent. Moving along. Item number 2 amends board actions on past management operation reports as listed. Item number 3 accepts resignation as listed in the agenda. Items number 4, items 9 through 24, 27 through 34, and number 37 appoint staff for the 2018-2019 school year in a variety of positions throughout the district as listed. Item number 5 deals with the transfer of the staff listed effective November 1st, 2018. And item number 6 also deals with transfer of staff as listed. Item number 7 approves leave of absences. Item... Item number 7 is leave of absences. Item number 8? Yeah, I don't know what I got to skip on. Apologize. Approves the assignment upon return from leave for the 2018-19 school year as listed. Item number 25 approves payment for Michael Sampson for the use of his CDL license for this current year. Item number 26 confirms that one quantitative and one qualitative merit goal set for Dr. Robert Tozzi has been satisfied to date and that the business administrator or secretary shall proceed as per state law. Number 35 appoint...
Honey, please hold on for a second. Does it say it's been satisfied? Because that's the wrong one. That's the wrong one if that's what it says.
My bad. And there I was thinking maybe you were super great and...
Stop it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we put the right resolution on.
Taking this back. Number 26, the resolved that the Linden Board of Education has determined that one quantitative and one qualitative merit goal has been established for the 2018-2019 school year and that the business administrator shall forward a copy of the resolution to the Union County Superintendents of School in accordance with NJ law. Yet further resolved that upon receipt of confirmation of satisfaction of the above goal from the Union County Superintendents of School, the applicable merit bonus provisions of the superintendent's contract shall be paid. You'll have to wait. Thank you. And last is, the last two are number 37, 35. Appoint enlisted students for part-time work for the 2018-19 school year to videotape assigned special projects. And 36 is appointing a Linden High School marching band volunteer for the 2018-19 school year. Mr. President, that concludes Management Operations and I move items 1 through 37 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Rople.
And 26 has been amended.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Uh, abstained.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Gilliam.
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski.
Yes.
Support Operations Report, Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes. The Support Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the District Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Ed for approval. Finance 1 through 21 and Facilities 1 through 10. Ask for a second.
Second. Rople.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam.
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski.
Yes.
Planning and Policy, Mr. Shahada.
The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. For first reading, number 2131, 3542.3, 4111 slash 4211, 4115, 4116, 6145.1, and 6145.2. And for a second reading, 6171.5. Mr. President, I move Planning and Policy, item 1, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Rople.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam.
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski.
Yes.
Negotiations, Mrs. Bellani.
Negotiations. We, I believe, have one with our part of the teacher and the secretary work. They're going to be waiting. They will be doing their post-vote agreement this week or sometime this month. We also have the second depart for Linden custodial on October 2nd and 4th. I hope to have a resolution before the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Tapleski. Yes. Planning and Policy, we only move item 1. We need to move item 2.
I heard item 2 myself, but...
You did?
I did. I wrote it down, but...
Did you zip?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thank you. All right. EST for parents in high school, Mrs. Birch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President Tapleski. Once a month, we sit down, the board members and myself, and we have a meeting with the parents. And we meet at the Board of Education building. And it's for parents to come out and have an informal talk with the board members about what's going on in the district. After I have that talk with the parents, I bring all of the information back to Dr. Robert Tozzi as well as the other board members. And we discuss what has been discussed in the meeting. In that meeting, though, we never, when I come back and speak with the board members and/or Dr. Robert Tozzi, we never discuss the parents' names or anything like that. We try to get most of the concerns and questions answered by the next meeting or whatever may have been taking place. We get it resolved and we come back to the next meeting with our answers. So we met. Our first meeting was September 18th at the Board of Education building at 7:00 PM. We had students, I'm sorry, parents representing Linden High School, McManus, Soul Elementary Schools 2, 4, 6, 8, 9, and 10. And we also had some moms and dads there, some guardians, some residents. We had an aunt present. We had parents who had children but are not yet of school age attained. There were some concerns about the languages that were in the elementary schools. The parents wanted to know how the languages were assigned to each of the school buildings. They wanted, they were happy that it's consistent, but they wanted to know how they were assigned to the buildings. There were some concerns about PD days for the teachers and that some of the teachers were out in the beginning of the school year a couple of times during the week. There was a concern about the backboard at Soul Gymnasium and the foam around the backboard, the safety of the kids when using it. There were some concerns about the, what do we call them? The retention vestibules?
Yes.
Yes. The retention vestibules that we put in place at the buildings to help with our security, with the not being done with the locks and things like that. There were some current concerns about Genesis and the password reset. Parents were having a hard time resetting their passwords. There was a concern about the ventilation at School 1 in the cafeteria on the first day of school and how hot it was in the building. So we did have a lot of parents talking to us about their concern of the air conditioning in the buildings. And they wanted to know if we had a protocol for each of the buildings and maybe a heat plan in place. There were some concerns about the pre-K 3 and 5th grader sharing gym time at School 5 and pre-K class taking gym in the cafeteria. There were some concerns about the drop-off at School Number 4 and how parents are flocking in other cars and not allowing them to leave when it's time to leave. At School 6, there were some concerns about parents moving cones in the parking lot and that being a serious situation with students walking through the parking lot and possibly getting hit by cars. There was some great things that were brought up at the meeting. A parent said that she has a freshman in high school and her daughter attended her first football game. And she's very happy that Linden won. She said concession stand was wonderful. It was a great night. She's enjoying high school and all of the clubs and activities that her daughter is able to participate in. She said back-to-school night was fabulous, that they were showcasing the bands in the ROTC, the dance program, all the wonderful things that were going on. She said she's very happy with it. We had a parent that said her son had a phenomenal experience over at McManus. He loves that they're changing classes. He leads the soccer team. He had a problem with his locker and the government's counselors took care of it immediately. Then we had a couple more concerns, which were students not having enough time to go to their lockers in between classes. And they were saying the teachers were discouraging the students from going in between classes. They said Soul was a breath of fresh air. We had very young teachers there. The teachers are communicating every day with the parents and the students. They said back-to-school night, they had nothing but positive things to say and they're happy to be over at Soul. There were some concerns about DRA grading for grade 2 over at School Number 5 and some concerns about math and reading packets. They said that the students were being stressed out. There were some concerns about the grading with the math packets. They said there was one wrong answer in the answer key on the math packets. And, I'm sorry. And then just some various concerns about the math packets. There were some parents that were interested in maybe discussing the early morning start time, which means starting school a little bit earlier. And they asked us when Genesis and Canvas are going to start speaking to each other. And they were concerned also about the schedules for the middle school, when they were going to come out for the, they said the A/B schedule has come out, but the 6-day schedule has not come out. So they were wondering when that possibly will come out. And then, of course, some Montoni concerns and, yeah, various concerns about the school lunch program with Montoni. They were very happy about the new traffic pattern over at School Number 9. And there were some concerns about the whiteboards and the installations at some of the schools and when those were going to be up. We have another meeting scheduled October 9th where all of these concerns and questions will be answered. So we hope that everyone who was at our first meeting comes back to hear all of the information that we're giving out. And we also encourage parents who did not come to, please come out. These meetings are very informational. You get a lot of back-and-forth talk between parents and also the board members. So please come out and join us. Our next meeting is October 9th at 7:00 PM in the board office. And we hope to see you there. We also have lots of, we have refreshments, coffee, brownies, and cookies. So that concludes my parent EST report. The student EST report. I sat with the students yesterday and we met in the newly renovated cafeteria. It's almost the same concept of the parents. I go in and I speak with the students. There's a group that's randomly picked by the advisors. Mrs. Kushner is our new advisor this year because Mr. Fikidi was our advisor last year, but he was promoted to our vice principal. But he will pop in. He said he's going to pop in and try to attend as many meetings as he can. So we welcome Mrs. Kushner. And also, what I do with the students in the beginning of the year and I get an idea from the group on how they want to run their meetings. Normally, what I do after is, when I'm speaking to them, I go to the principal and I tell her all of the concerns and questions and even all the good information and she'll give me the answers. But last year, the group said that they would love to have her come in But last year, the group said that they would love to have her come in the last fifteen minutes of the meeting and maybe answer some of the questions that she could answer immediately right there. And this year's group also decided they wanted to do that. So I, we didn't do it for our first meeting, because it was just kind of breaking the ice, getting to know the kids and just hearing some of the little bit that they had to discuss. But ours had our next meeting, she will attend at the end and answer some of the questions. I also bring all of this information back to the board and we discuss it. So we had ten female students and three male students. Four were seniors, three were juniors, three were sophomores, and three were freshmen. So we had a great variety. They were very, very, very excited about the cafeteria. They loved the fact that there was AC in the cafeteria and they said they greatly appreciated all of the efforts that we have made to renovate the cafeteria. They said that what they would like to see is maybe some pops of color once everything kind of settles down in the beginning of the school year and have the cafeteria decorated and things like that. But they were very, very excited. They were hoping maybe the clubs or the classes would come up with some ideas to decorate it. And maybe also, they were thinking canvas prints that were out. They said there were some out in front of the principal's office and down the hallway. So they said that would be a good way to put things up, but then they can change it periodically so it's not, you know, there the whole time. They said the cafeteria food's been okay. They had mac and cheese and they loved it. They said the lunches balanced out a little bit. There was some concern about the crowded lunches and they said the teens had balanced out a little bit, but seventh lunch still was a bigger lunch. But they had some concerns about the, I guess, the timely fashion of how they are processed through the lines. They feel either there's not enough employees or there's just too many students to get them through the lines quicker. And they said at the hop lunch line station, they have a system where they can just swipe their card and their lunch is paid for, but there's not, there's only one system. And they said that holds up their line. So they were hoping that we can get another system put in there so that they can just swipe the card, because they said trying to tell the worker either their number or the worker punching it in manually, it takes so much longer to do that. So that was one of their concerns. They are very, very excited about the new media center. They did question when it was going to be available for them to use, but they are very, very excited about it. They wanted to know if our guidance department can help them with finding out their rankings and their scores for their college applications so that they can start applying for the seniors. The gym lobby has like a showcase of awards to showcase all of the sports. And what they're looking into doing is an academic wall to showcase some of the academics going on. So they discussed among themselves and asked if they would go out into their friends and into the group and find out what kind of academic things that they would like to promote and put on this wall. So they discussed that amongst themselves. They're gonna go out and meet some friends and then they're gonna come back. And from there, they're gonna try to build this wall of academics. They were talking about maybe valedictorians, they asked valedictorians, salutatorians, things like that. Students were also interested in seeing if there was a way to put a study hall period into their schedule. They said with sports after school and things like marching band and football, they don't have time when they come home after school to do all of the homework that they have. So they said the study hall period would be very helpful to them. They were very concerned about the math packets. One of the things they were concerned about is the answer key. They felt that the answer key, they just didn't like having the answer key. They kind of said, well, what was the purpose of having the answer key? So I did explain a little bit to them why the answer key was put in there. They understood it a little bit better, but they were a little concerned. They did not like the book for their reading summer program. They said they would like a book that probably read like an entire book, not just chapters. They said they did, the packet was fine, they didn't mind that. And they said that it would be helpful if the language arts teachers would start talking about the book in June when they already, you know, once they get the title of the book and they know about the book, if the teachers can start talking about it in class and talking with them and kind of guiding them on how they should be doing the packets. And there are some concerns from seniors, well, juniors now seniors that took some ID classes over the summer online and they thought that it would fulfill their requirements and it did not. So there were some concerns about that. We will be scheduling another meeting within the next week or so, myself and Ms. Kushner. And I will be reporting back to you our next meeting. And that concludes my report for the student EST.
Thank you, Ms. Birch. Mrs. Guglielmo, did we have a little, we have dates set up for middle school yet?
Yes, we have dates. For the middle school, they're gonna be October ninth for both schools.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
EST for special ed, Mr. Martucci, nothing, nothing in his time. Ed services, Mrs. Guglielmo?
So we just went over pretty much like the new hires, summer programs that were successful. And we have a new meeting on November seventh.
State and county delegates, that's me. I attended two meetings these past two Saturdays. The first one was a legislative committee meeting, which I happen to serve on the legislative committee. And the second one was on the county leadership. And the big one was, it has a lot to do with the legislation that's moved through the New Jersey Legislature that affects school districts. One of the things that has been established is, is a thing called the path to progress, which basically is a committee looking to find ways to fund things and where money is coming from and stuff of that nature. How to reduce costs and things along those lines. Pension benefit reform, ed reform at the administrative level, county municipal government reform, shared services, state local government tax structure, and levering assets to stabilize the pension system. That's what that's about. The governor is also involved. There was an agreement announced between the NJDA and the governor on school health benefits, but that has not been approved yet. So that had to go to that committee. Legislation that's been signed. There's a bill that requires certain buses to have lap and shoulder belts. I believe it's new buses. But I don't know what the specs are on that yet, that stuff has to go through. Another bill requires certain schools to maintain opioid antidose and allows nurses and trained employees to administer it. So a bill that permits the superintendent to designate an employee with certain expertise as a school safety specialist. Another bill directs the state board of ed to authorize computer science ed endorsements to an instructional certificate. Now, the bill requires districts to include consequences of distributing and soliciting sexually explicit images through electronic means as part of the standards for health and phys ed. And there's a bill that has been signed and it was, it may have been splash, daily recess for kindergarten through grade five, but it will not take effect until the nineteen-twenty school year because of scheduling issues. By the time it was approved, it was too late to modify the schedule. But I believe we're already compliant.
Yeah, the guidance that we received, Mr. Tapleski, is that it will take effect for next school year. But we already have thirty minutes a day of recess in our district. The issue for us will be that we count some of that recess time as part of our phys ed requirement. And under the new law, unless that changes, because it may, because there's been some backlash, you're not allowed to count that time towards phys ed. So would require maybe some shuffling on our part, but nothing that we could manage.
And one of the biggest bills that was passed right after the budget was approved, within the next month, there was a law that modifies the school funding. And a lot of that has to do with the regs that restricted growth. So it didn't matter how many additional students you got, you were limited to how much more money you would get. And also, if you lost students, you didn't lose money. So that's been changed. Fortunately, we're a district that is receiving more than, the problem we had was we were capped. And so we weren't receiving the money we were deducted based on the formula. That has changed. But have we received any of the money yet, Kath?
We're receiving a portion of each one.
Start, but it didn't start till September? All right. There are two laws that NJSDA is looking at. One is a proposed law came, it's in the assembly, which proposes to that all boards and councils videotape and post all meetings online, including executive sessions. School boards is opposed to it as one unfunded mandate. Additionally, when you're in executive session, there's a, you wouldn't be able to post a lot of the stuff that goes on until it's resolved, until the issue is no longer a issue. There is no senate counterpart, so they think that's gonna die. And a second bill has to do with screening students for depression in grades seven to twelve. And while it seems noble, school boards is presently opposed to it because it's extremely vague. They're talking about screening, there's two questions. And then it's still gonna be given to the guidance staff to determine whether or not the kids are depressed. So they said that they would support something like that if it were a little bit more specific. And the second thing was, again, other than provide money for it, because that becomes a non-funded mandate, because now you're dealing with, just like HIV, you're dealing with people spending a lot of time. And time is money. And then last thing, Liz is not gonna like this. There is a big fight between the government, executive board of the government, the Department of Ed, and the legislature are fighting over testing. The biggest problem is Senator Ruiz, who was the sponsor of the bill that modified the test and how it would count for the teacher evaluation. Fortunately, and the fight is, basically, she objected and they put her off along to the next state board of ed meeting. But Dr. Rappellet, right now it counts for thirty percent, I believe. Last year it was thirty percent, this year the commissioner reduced it to five, but that's, and they-
What I'm talking about is the amount that the assessment sort of was down towards teacher evaluation.
And that's the, that's the problem that Senator Ruiz has with it. Now, I would suggest that if you're concerned about that, that you contact her office. She is not a senator, she's an assistant town, but she is the chair of the education committee in the senate. What test is going to be used is still up in the air, they don't know. And the one thing, the one reason that they were able to reduce how much accounted, and Senator Ruiz really can't do anything about it, is that it falls under a thing called commissioner regulations. So because it's the commissioner regulation, the commissioner has the right to change it as he sees fit. There are two sets of regs, one is state board, which must be state board approved, the other one is commissioner, and the commissioner can do a lot of things on his own. As far as county, at workshop in October, there will be the county cafe again. There will be on Monday, a gathering for about an hour, I think, from one, but you check. But they're gonna try something a little different. And if you go there and there's a topic you wanna discuss, you're gonna have a whiteboard and you write it on there. And they're going to look at the topics. And then they're literally gonna have classes later on that afternoon on the topics that are most popular. They don't, they're planning on five, but if there's enough interest, they may cut down the length of time for them and do ten. So that's, that's what's up with the county. Also, October seventeenth, I just had it, as I-
Delegate is November-
No, not delegate, county meeting. County meeting is the seventeenth. So if you haven't signed up, you can go online and sign up. Dinner starts at, I'm sorry, dawn, you can't go.
Wednesday night, so you guys change it.
The food is served at six and then six forty-five is when the program starts. And I believe it's legal as a topic. So that concludes those two reports.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So the legislation about the screening of children who are depressed, is that every single child in the school would be screened by?
From seventh to twelfth grade.
Every child, no matter if they exhibit any type of depression?
Well, that's, that's the proposal. I mean, you know, unfortunately, when something happens, our legislature especially tends to be a little knee-jerk about it. And they, and they really don't think things through all the way. You know, HIV is a big, is a good thing. But when it came out, it was not well thought out. And, you know, the bus thing, you know where the three-point seatbelts came from? You know, the unfortunate accident, you know. So, I mean, they're doing the right thing, but they, they really need to step sometimes. And you need to get in touch with your legislators. Ours are Linda Carter and Jim Kennedy. Linda Carter's from Plainfield, Jim Kennedy is from Broadway, and Senator Skatari, who's from London. So those are the people you need to, if there's an issue with legislation, those are the people you could get in touch with. I did meet with Carter and Kennedy this summer with some other county officials. So Senator Skatari, getting to see him is a different issue. Okay, that's, that concludes my report. Safety committee.
Security, safety?
Yeah, security, safety.
As I believe Mrs. Birch had touched upon, we have completed installing the actual vestibules, the man trap. They're not a complete, we didn't expect them to be complete from the time that school started. It takes, there's a whole process in getting the doors installed after the vestibule was built. They have to be wired, special locks, go on. So we weren't expecting them to be a hundred percent complete, but they are on, on, on time as far as we are concerned. We expect them to be finished shortly, correct, before the next board meeting? Or not? But the, one of the other concerns over at McManus was the lighting in the vestibule, and that is being updated as we speak. The, if anybody's concerned about the entrance, the entranceway from McManus, from the gym, we had it updated so that it's ADA compliant and we had to wait for the cement to settle before the railings come in and put the doors in. So that's all being addressed, but it's not that it just was, the ball was dropped. There's, there's a process, it has to go through. We had over a hundred and fifty new cameras installed or upgraded throughout the district. We're gonna continue monitoring our systems and adding to it as needed. And again, there are things going on that we're not gonna discuss in public. But if you have any concerns, please reach out to me or anybody in the administration and we'll address it as we can.
Mrs. Vilani, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the chief of police, our board attorney, hopefully the city attorney to try to finalize the class three officer agreement. So hopefully that can happen and get on the agenda for our October meeting and get approved by the city council in the best-case scenario, January first.
We actually had a parent at the EST meeting who's volunteered her husband to like, to see the criteria. So that's, that was really a, um, security issues.
Thank you. Any new business?
Mr. Tapleski, I have kind of new business, is that a category?
Kind of new business?
Last Thursday night at our committee, the whole, we talked about, we received a request from a nonprofit organization in New Jersey, Parents Against Recreational Cannabis. And the request, I think we're all a little concerned that the request asked if the board could host a forum for a debate or a moderated debate between two organizations. And while we weren't comfortable with that, we asked our other board attorney, Ms. Miller, to communicate with this nonprofit organization. They have since changed their request. I just received the request as we're sitting here tonight. They're just requesting use of facilities. So if that's something, I would suggest we maybe can add that on tonight because they do, they're requesting use of facilities for October, three, three dates.
One of the three.
One of the three, right. October second, ninth, or tenth. So one, if, if, if the board is okay with adding that on, I'm certainly, you know-
Well, we can, we can move that.
What facility are we asking?
Honestly, didn't specify unless they, I'm sorry, my high school. I just don't know how to, how to pick a date unless we approve the use of facilities.
On one of these three dates.
On one of these three dates.
Yeah.
So if that's okay?
As long as they comply with the-
Of course, that's in the, in Ms. Miller's correspondence to this organization.
Take a motion.
Use of facilities, London High School on either October tenth, sorry, October two, October nine, or October ten, according to the use of facilities policy and all the conditions required.
So moved.
Go, Paul?
Mr. Martucci?
Yep.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Vilani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Tapleski?
Yes.
This is just to be crystal clear that the board takes no position either for or against the use of recreational cannabis. This is just strictly a use of facilities, not endorsed by the board as to what is going on there, correct?
Correct. Thank you, I was gonna ask you to clarify that for the public.
Other new business?
Actually, we're doing a business. I just wanted to ask, this is clearly about the student, that the students who asked about their transcripts. Is, is there any way that they can obtain, every student should be able to obtain an unofficial copy of their transcript, is that not right? Is there any way that they can obtain, every student should be able to obtain an unofficial copy of their transcript, is that not right? So is the issue that they have to actually go and request it? Is that what, or can't we just email or send a copy to every student, or is that unreasonable?
I think what they were looking for was their ranking, and they said their ranking hasn't been done yet.
So if I remember when I was high school principal, the ranking, we don't do it till the end of the year, right?
Till the end of the year, correct. Yeah, they wouldn't have me ranking right now, so it would be done, right?
They already got this ranking.
Okay. Thank you.
Because they can see where they've done in the years, whatever's been populated into the transcripts so far, which has passed, and then they can just get from the guidance account or an unofficial copy.
So they can't, the guidance council can't come up with the ranking if the student asks for it?
We don't run that, that's run through Genesis with the grades and everything else, and the weights of the courses, so that usually doesn't get run until the early spring.
Yeah, I guess the college applications are asking them, so that's why they were asking.
The campus asks for their ranking?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, let me find out, you know, maybe there was-
I believe there was another one, new business that we didn't discuss, was the creation of a new committee?
Oh, I was gonna say that, save that for comments. The homework, did you hear about?
Yeah, Roger, well, that's a new committee, so.
Yeah. I was gonna save that for comments, because that doesn't have any action. Because we did that.
I make a motion that we join with Mr. Shahada on the resolution. Whereas, honor about September 18th, 2018, when the Board of Education member Ahmed Shahada filed a complaint with the New Jersey School Ethics Commission, alleging that Gregory Martusi and Kaderzina Kozak violated the School Ethics Act. And, whereas, Mr. Shahada and the members of the London Board of Education have a good faith belief that the conduct of board members Martusi and Kozak have engaged in conduct that is violative of NJSA 18A:12-24.15. And, whereas, pursuant to the School Ethics Act, the board is not authorized to file a complaint with the School Ethics Commission in its own name against board members Martusi and Kozak. And, whereas, although the board can no longer censure a member of the board, as that right resides exclusively with the School Ethics Commission, the members of the Board of Education have personal knowledge of the actions forming the basis of the complaint, and believe it necessary to bring board member Martusi's and board member Kozak's ethical violations to the attention of the School Ethics Commission. And, now therefore be it resolved that London Board of Education authorizes the services of special counsel to prosecute the complaint on behalf of Ahmed Shahada that has been filed with the New Jersey Department of Education, School Ethics Commission, and represents him in such complaint.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none local?
Mr. Martusi?
No.
Mr. Shahada?
Abstained.
Mrs. Vilani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bibiana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilliam?
Abstained.
Mr. Tapewski?
Yes. Comments from board members?
I have a few. Let's start.
Start off by missing, wishing Miss Welch a happy birthday. She's been paying attention.
First, I want to say, working on the negotiations was, committee was very interesting for me, because being a board member, I had to walk the balance between being a parent and being a board member. And that, if anybody knows me, was difficult to begin with. But now, working on the contracts for next year, I'm now a taxpayer. But wanting the best for our students, wanting to teach us what they deserve. So for me, that was a new eye-opening experience, and one that I hope somebody else will deal with for the next contract.
I did seven years for somebody else.
So I'm glad that it's coming to an end. But I have worked with the administration, and knowing what we believe is going to be happening with the funding that we're getting from the state, I believe we're going to be able to have a 0% increase in our budget next year, barring any incidents that come up, and if we're getting the money that we're supposed to be getting. So I am very proud of that, and we have a phenomenal business administrator who we would be lost without. So thank you again, Ms. Gaylord. I was gonna mention the homework thing.
You can go ahead. I'll let you take it, you're on the committee?
No, we don't know who's gonna be re-elected, so we made it, Mrs. Birch and-
Mrs. Birch is chair.
Yeah, she's the chair.
Mrs. Shah.
So there's been a lot of discussion in the years past over summer reading packets, also over homework, and doing homework and projects over long weekends, holiday breaks. Dr. Abtug and I have had conversations about homework in general. And we have formed a Maha committee to actually take a look at our district, what the teachers are assigning over the breaks, over the summer vacation, and daily, for homework every day, and see if it's healthy, helping, and how we should be moving going forward. So they're gonna form a committee with parents, with teachers, and with students, and hopefully come up with a plan for our district going forward, so we're not stuck back in the 1950s where it was X, Y, Z, and that's it. Let's do what's right for our families, so the kids can succeed and still have a healthy family life, which is, in my opinion, the most important thing. And I really hope to see what they can do again. And that's it for me, Mr. Tapewski?
I don't know.
I don't, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what? I took up one of the things. I'm sorry, I completely forgot. I want to give a shout-out to our central registration people. Because they did an outstanding job. Now, I know this is gonna be, there were a lot of complaints that people had meetings and wait times going into mid-September. What you may not realize is that we've had a total of, I'm not sure if the 50 potential registrations have come through, and if they do, that'll be a total of 908 new students for this year. And over 500 of them were August and September alone. So we did go out of our way, we made sure that we got overtime so we could put more people on, but they locked it. So I really want to give a shout-out to everybody who gave our district their all. It was crazy times. But not to make anybody worry, we're a very transient district. So we haven't had, we don't have the final tally yet, that we look to be only about maybe 50 extra students this year. So that means between graduation and moving, we have maybe plus or minus about 50 students.
Miss Welch?
So yes, today really is my birthday, and I'm really here at the board meeting. And I just want to say that, you know, when I was able to do this, you know, I consider it a privilege and an honor, and I really took it very seriously, and I still do, even though my time here is limited. And I just want to say that, you know, on your birthday, you usually get to make some wishes. And so I make this wish today, that everybody here that serves on this board, and everybody that decides to run for this board in the future, makes sure that they always have the children and the students, and the staff and the faculty of this district at the forefront, and that is it. And that is what you, your job is as a board member. Believe me, I was on that side and this side, so I learned a lot. So I just wanted to say, that really truly is my wish for today. Thanks.
Seeing the other board members, I want to make my comments before I open to the public. Football team's doing good. Outside of a heartbreaking loss opening day, they've real lost three consecutive wins. And so, they're doing well. I can't, I don't-
Right, ninth month in the state.
Oh, we've made it to the 12th?
Yes. Hat toss at the games?
Oh, yeah, we have two home games, two away games we've had so far.
Mr. Tapewski, I think you have to spit and turn around a few times to match up.
Not you, they're gonna beat the boys. Alright, so hopefully we'll get a report on some of our other athletic teams next month.
Absolutely.
Alright, that concludes my comments. So for, a big example was this summer, we were supposed to renovate the auditorium in Soul. During the spring, I guess it was, we found that, when we discovered, Kath? That the roof was leaking, and the back wall, which is an outside wall, the back wall, had issues with the-
Pointing?
Point, well-
Water infiltrator.
Yeah, water infiltration to the wall. So basically, they had to be, what is referred to as repointing, where they take all the masonry between the bricks and put new masonry in. So instead of renovating the auditorium, and then having it be partially destroyed by the leaking roof and the water coming in through the wall, we made those corrections. Those took the summer, so we did not have the time to do the auditorium. The auditorium will be done next summer. So all three, the two middle schools will all have, well, both, both middle schools will have refurbished auditorium, and of course, the high school was done a few years back.
I mean, the parents are, you know, in case people don't know, out in the rest of the community, Soul was actually not refreshed last year, and the only thing that they were waiting for was the auditorium. So once we get the Soul auditorium done this year, Soul have completed their whole renovation that took over a year. So no schools are being, no schools are being neglected in our district.
Can I just answer that really quick? So please take the time to tell your friends and neighbors, even people who are not involved, maybe don't have students, and the schools taxpayers, to really take a look at Mr. Miranda's report, because it's very thorough, and it has the accurate information, as opposed to some of the misinformation that you have been receiving recently. So please take a note and tell everyone you can to really look at the report, if that's where the real, true information is.
There's also a lot of drama stuff about changing boilers, scraping up floors and things like that. It actually is a fabulous presentation, and it shows you where the maintenance money goes throughout the whole summer, what we do.
You know, one of the great things is that our maintenance department is on top of things. So when they start to experience issues, like boilers being too old, they look into the money available and the work that can be done, and they do it at the appropriate time. Doing boilers in the winter is not a good thing. So replacing, what'd we do, two or three schools, Kath? Three? We replaced the boilers in three schools. So that's a lot of money, and that's a lot of work. But those schools are gonna be, heat won't be an issue this winter.
And I don't know, I don't know that we're necessarily gonna, even though this wasn't public, but we did authorize our business administrator to go ahead and put an RFP out for a civil engineer to do a feasibility study for air conditioning on all of our buildings. This, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but we need to have a good picture of what it's gonna cost and what it's gonna take. Because all the buildings would need to be updated with the electrical, and once that's updated from the street to the building, the wiring inside the building has to be updated. So it's not anything that's gonna help us this year, but we are, we are looking into it, and we will have an update when all that information comes through, and- And yes, Mrs. Gilliam?
Can we use our current architectural firm that has the engineering that did the fire room facility?
I would think yes.
Okay, because they're already approved?
If they were already approved, then there would have been, so we'd be impatient. Again, it's, it's just a study, and this way, you can see in black and white what it would take to get each building up with air conditioning, what it's gonna cost, and then maybe give you a better idea of if that's where we want to spend the money, versus other places in our education system that it may be better placed, but we'll see. And this time, I swear, I'm done.
Yeah. That's what you said.
Down, down.
Seeing no other, no other comments for the public, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Do you have any other comments?
Go, motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.